For we now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Negracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Altenberg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Ty.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Ross. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Negracia. Alderman Peel. Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Ross. Twenty-one present, you have Quorum.
Quorum being present, um, we are truly blessed today to have uh, in our presence and to be led in prayer by Pastor Kenneth Williams of Rest Outreach, uh, Co- Church of God in Christ. Uh, Pastor Williams, we are in your hands.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President. We, we thank God and honored to be before the distinguished uh, Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis. At this time, we're getting ready to go into prayer, but before we go into prayer, we want to have a, a word of silence for the, the horrific shooting that took place in Texas where there were about eighteen children's killed, plus two, uh, staff people shot. And also, we want to remember the life and the legacy of Irv Clay who served on the Board of Aldermen, if my understanding, for at least twelve years. So we want to have a moment of silence before we go into prayer. Amen. Father God, we thank him. We praise you, oh God, for an opportunity. We're so honored to be before the distinguished men and women of the city of St. Louis. God, I pray that now as they begin their proceedings, I ask you to bless them, oh God, as they move forward, oh God, in making laws and govern the city of St. Louis, I pray that you bless them, oh God. In the name of Jesus, God, we ask you to give them insight and direction to every problem and every situation that arises in the city of St. Louis. Give them peace, oh God. God, I pray for the leadership from the mayor's office all the way down to the last alderman and all the leadership in the city of St. Louis. I pray protection upon the police officers, those that are out there serving and protecting the citizens of St. Louis City. God, we ask you just continue to let your mercy and your grace encap about them. Let a head be a born and then a round, the automatic boy, that, that there's no hurt or harm that might come to them and their family. God, we honor you this day and we give you the glory and the praise in Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen and amen.
Amen. Uh, Pastor Williams, we thank you so much for, uh, joining us today and leading us off in prayer. Um, and if you will, before you, before you leave, can you tell the board what you do, the other thing that you, the other, your other hat that you wear outside of the church, uh, you know, in community service?
Amen. Thank you again. I, I serve as a city official in the city of Uplands Park, in the village of Uplands Park, one of the municipalities in St. Louis County. I have served, uh, over twelve to thirteen, from chairman, which is the mayor, down to alderman. And I am excited to serve the people in which I live in. I always say, if I'm not gonna move, I might as well be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. So I'm hoping to govern with, you know, I ask God to be my lead and I govern with all the honesty within my heart. So I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Williams.
God bless you all.
And Pastor Williams, uh, also, I want to thank you for offering that moment of silence, uh, for Irv Clay and also for the many, many, uh, people who lost their lives, who, no, not lost their lives, whose lives were sensibly taken in Texas. Uh, gun violence has gripped this nation like never before. We're seeing things happen uh, across this nation that we've never seen before. And, uh, to have a situation where the shooting was so violent that, uh, the parents, some of the parents couldn't even, um, identify uh, their children. That, that is beyond, um, uh, anything that I thought I would ever hear in my lifetime. Uh, we need common sense gun laws across America, and I'm asking that people reach out to Moms Demand Action. Uh, they, they nationally work on, on, uh, these issues and we need to continue to push to assure that, um, you know, an eighteen-year-old kid can't just go out and buy thirty-five hundred dollars worth of weapons and ammo and, and pick it up that day and use it. This is, uh, uh, as a father, um, and as a human being on this planet, I'm having real trouble with this one and, uh, trying to balance that one in my head. So, so thank you again, Pastor Williams.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Um. We dispense with line item three, introduction of, I guess, any introduction of, I guess. Yeah, introduction, I guess. Almen from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Certainly. That was quick.
Yeah.
Never gathered here on, uh, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, uh, which this is Eat More Fruits and Vegetables Day, but it's also Chardonnay Day. So why don't we choose and choose wisely? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Both of those can work together. Uh, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
All in from tenth, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt, approve the minutes from, uh, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Second, about all the one from the fourteenth and Alderman from the twenty-second. Uh, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve our minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
She carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions from any of our informal counters? Would anyone like taking bills or resolutions from any of our informal counters? We would dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance, amended ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-zero, which ordinance amended ordinance number six-eight-nine-six-four relating to a lease agreement dated September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven between the City of St. Louis and Fred Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to a lease agreement between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC containing severability clause. Board Bill thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance amended ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-one, which ordinance amended ordinance number six-seven-two-nine-eight relating to a lease agreement dated January the first, two thousand and seven, between the City of St. Louis and Fred Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the city and the New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha Inc., I'm sorry, Alpha LLC containing severability clause. Board Bill thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Board of Fman Enforcement, amended ordinance number seven-zero-zero-seven-four, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a second amended and restated financing agreement in connection with the financing and refinancing of certain costs associated with the NGA West Facilities, Facilities Modernization Project and containing an emergency clause. That's the end of first reading of board bills.
All right. Uh, Alderman from the first, do you have something?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I don't know if you, you all should probably know by now that Alderman from the twenty-sixth, the former Alderman from twenty-sixth, Irvin Clay passed last week. And I have a resolution that when it's appropriate, I want to suspend the rules to introduce it for unanimous consent because his funeral is tomorrow.
All right.
And also, at an appropriate time, I would like to ask for a, uh, moment of silence.
Okay, excellent. So I'll come to you right before the, uh, uh, cursy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill thirty-four and thirty-five. To the HUHS Committee, Board Bill thirty-six. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Education and Youth Matters with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill eighteen, committee sub sponsored by Alderman Green, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Page, Alderman Negracia, Alderman Evans, Alderman Switzer, and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance for the creation of a city youth council to be composed of both adults and members of the youth of the City of St. Louis for the purpose of gathering information for and making po- policy recommendation to the mayor and the Board of Alderpersons concerning the state of children and youth of the City of St. Louis. That's the end of second reading report of standing committees.
We will dispense with line items fourteen through sixteen, uh, third reading consent.
Board Bill ten, as amended.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent count.
Move on from tenth and retain the second on that motion.
Second.
Second, invite all the ones from the fourteenth. Uh, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our third reading consent power. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman. I heard you. Um, Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Ty.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Ross. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ross. Twenty-five ayes votes.
All right. By your votes, staying motion, all from tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Third reading reporter regroupings.
Board Bill ten, as amended.
All other business beings suspended. The Vice President shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that this may become law. Thank you. All the ones from the first. You recognize on suspension of the rules for the purposes of introducing courtesy resolution from the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'd move to, uh, suspend the rules, uh, to, for the purpose of introducing Resolution thirty-five, which is a courtesy resolution um, regarding former twenty-sixth ward alderman Irving Clay, who I was, uh, elected to, to, in the class of nineteen ninety-one. He passed away last Friday and his funeral is tomorrow. Um, and he was a dynamic of it, individual that spent twelve years down here, part of the Irving.
Hold on, let me, let me.
Second.
Move by all the ones from the first.
Second.
The second about all the ones from the twenty-sixth.
Previous rule.
Uh, there's been a request for previous rule. There are no objection, motion carries. And, um, all the ones, so Madam Clerk, please add, um, the resolution to the end of the courtesy resolution calendar. All along from the first, uh, since we're going to you, I'm gonna recognize you to just make the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar, then I'll, then I'll let you talk about that then. All along from first, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we pass the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
It's been moved by all ones from the first. Second, uh, who is that? All the ones from twenty-seven? Oh, all the ones from the fourth. Second about all the ones from the fourth. All the ones from the first, um, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, am I allowed now to speak on the?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, Resolution thirty-five is very close to my heart. Uh, in nineteen ninety-one, a bunch of, uh, new alderpeople came storming to this board, six to be exact. Uh, uh, Jack Garvey from the fourteenth ward, uh, Velma Bailey from the nineteenth ward, Bertha Mitchell from the fourth ward, Dan Gruen from the eleventh ward. Uh, let's see who got missed somebody in it, and Sharon Tyus from the twentieth ward, uh, and Irving Clay from the twenty-sixth ward. We were, uh, a class that we were pretty full of ourselves because we were such a big class, almost a fourth of the board. Uh, but we were also intimidated that there is this guy named, uh, Irving Clay, the alderman with us, that was on his third career. And he was the big brother of Congressman Irving Clay and the uncle to then state representative, uh, Lacy Clay. Um, but, uh, Irving Clay and I became good friends. He became a valuable, valuable member of our, uh, boat, honorable board. Um, he's the kind of person that he gave his word. That's where it was. He cared about children and youth matters. He would have loved that we added that committee. Uh, he was the first black recreation, uh, commissioner in the City of St. Louis. Uh, he, uh, although he was Bill Clay, the congressman's brother, he was the older brother and he never played the, uh, role of being something less. Um, he was Irving Clay, the older brother. Um, so we spent ten of our twelve years sharing an office. He's a very good friend of mine, not only politically. Um, because when I first got down here, I would call him Mr. Clay, and he would say, Sharon, call me Irv, and I would say, I can't do that because my mother raised me. Uh, he and Freeman Bosley Senior, I both would call Mister Bosley and Mister Clay because that's how I was raised. But I did, they both became very good friends of mine. So I did finally get to call them by their first names, but it was with temptation. I was, uh, kind of scared to do that then. Um, but Irv has done so many things in his life. He was in recreation here, then he went to Richmond, Virginia, and he, uh, was the, he worked in recreation there. Then he came back to St. Louis and worked in the mayor's office. And then, and like I said, in nineteen ninety-one, he was, uh, elected as the alderman of the twenty-sixth ward. Um, and after he, um, even after he got off the board in two thousand and, uh, three, he's remained on boards and commissions that he had done. A lot of what you see going on in the twenty-sixth ward now with the new development and stuff like that, Irv Clay started all of that, started building new houses when people didn't believe that across Delmar, that you could build houses and have a value. Um, he was a trusted friend. Um, I guess the president and I are the only two people left besides the clerk that served with him. Um, and so I just want to tell you what, uh, uh, lost this, uh, city did, had did, uh, of what a loss it was to the City of St. Louis last Friday to lose a former alderman of the twenty-sixth ward, who was, uh, again, an outstanding individual. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, as tough as Irv Clay was, he loved his wife Evelyn. And when she got sick, she, he, she, he was her caregiver, and that was the one person that I could see that could tame Irv Clay was Evelyn. And so, um, I'm just, um, I'm, I'm sad to, uh, have to speak about Irv. He was ninety-seven, I want to say. I got a chance to talk to Congressman Clay, Bill Clay, day before yesterday, and Lacy and Michelle. Um, and if you look at the, um, the, uh, resolution, he went by a lot of names, like Michelle said, that she called him Uncle Bubbles and that, uh, other people tried to get her not to say that when, she was like, no, I called him Uncle Bubbles dolls all the time. His granddaughter, he was Papa. So he went by a lot of names, uh, but mostly he was a gentleman and a good legislator and an advocate for the City of St. Louis, and I will be, uh, he will be sadly missed.
All the ones from the first, I just want to thank you for bringing forward this resolution. I did have the honor of serving with Irv Clay, and then I had the honor of just being his friend for so many years. Uh, he would, um, reach back out, uh, to this board from time to time and to myself to ensure, you know, if there, he, people, when he retired, and, um, all the ones from the twenty-sixth could probably tell you, when he retired, he didn't retire. Uh, he was working in that community tirelessly and, um, you know, he would call me quite often about, um, uh, you know, automatic issues and, and, um, things that he wanted to get done in the community and, and things of that nature. And then, uh, Alderman Ty, I'm surprised you didn't mention the fact that, uh, Irv fooled a lot of people because you could never tell that Irv was the, the age he was. I mean, that man. And until you said that he was Bill Clay's older brother, you know, I, I didn't know it. He, he was one of these people that looked young, that, uh, moved, uh, you know, you just couldn't tell, right? He, he was timeless, so, uh, I definitely will be missing him. Uh, all the ones from the nineteenth.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just wanted to, um, give my condolences to the family. I know I won't be able to, uh, attend the services, but, um, I raised my kids in the twenty-sixth ward. I got my volunteerism and neighborhood and politics out of the twenty-sixth ward. And I watched all those guys and it was just incredible because they understood what it meant to not only serve people, but to also serve people in a way of respect and actual equality. You see, it's one thing to talk about what needs to be done or what you ought to do or what someone else should do. But when you get it done, that's what's important. Uh, and I had an opportunity to sit with him for a few hours. He came to visit the Mackler Shepherd, uh, Senior Living Building, uh, for luncheon one Sunday. And I tell you, he was the king of the throne. Everybody wanted to sit and talk with him, and, uh, it was just wonderful. As you said, he still looked young. You could not tell his age, and he always had great stories to share. So, uh, he is one that truly left something here for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All the ones from the fourteenth.
Uh, Mr. Clay truly was one of our city fathers, and he has left a legacy, and, and I believe that, you know, as a lifelong city resident, um, these are the people that have laid the groundwork for what we're doing today and that we need to respect and look back on the things they accomplished in their time. Um, they've left us, you know, with, with quite a legacy, and, uh, I feel that Mr. Clay was truly a stalwart of the City of St. Louis.
Thank you all.
Uh, condolences to the family on their loss, but he's left a legacy.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, all along from the first, um, now that the resolution is in front of us and properly positioned on the, uh, courtesy resolutions calendar, would you like to request that your resolution be made and banked?
Yes, Mr. President, I would. I think that would be wonderful. I wanted to add one other thing because Irv Clay loved to run, so he came down into his seventies, and I cannot leave that out. He ran, he would still be running in Forest Park, and he had me come run with him one time, and I said, nope, Irv, I'm not gonna do that anymore. And I would request that it be, uh, be passed in bank, sir.
It's been moved by all the ones from first, that we make Resolution thirty-five and bank it, was seconded by all the ones from the twenty-sixth and some other people that couldn't pick it up. Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we make Resolution thirty-five and bank. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. After hearing Alderman from the twenty-second, I think he was one of the seconds on that, uh, in bank resolution. Yeah, um, uh, anything further on the courtesy resolutions calendar before we move first? All the ones from the first, we did a moment of silence when we began the meeting for Irv Clay. Uh, but you're welcome to, uh, do it again when we, um, uh, before we adjourn.
No, sorry. You guys did it, um, so that'll be fine. I'll be at the funeral tomorrow and then I'll also bring it together, so I'm trying to make both events tomorrow, so that's fine. I just wanted to, uh, be respectful from this, uh, board because he was one of two brothers, because the first one was his brother Bill Clay, who was also, uh, alderman backward, Dick Getheart from the fourteenth ward, back many, many years, years ago, so, uh, we had a couple of brothers. We had the Roberts Brothers, who I replaced one of them. So, um, from the twentieth and nineteenth, so we have had family members, so that, I appreciate that you had the moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by all ones from the first, seconded by the, uh, all, uh, all the women from the fourth, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. Uh, any further discussions on this courtesy resolutions calendar? The move and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, second. First reading resolutions.
Resolution thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, supporting the study implementing an emergency vehicle traffic signal preemption system.
Uh, Alderman from the twenty-second, uh, uh, would you like to make the motion uh, to send Resolution thirty-three to public safety, uh, on behalf of Alderman from the twenty-third?
Absolutely. I'm going to send Resolution thirty-three to public safety.
The move by all on from twenty-second, seconded by all the ones from the fourteenth, that we send Resolution thirty-three to public safety, all the ones from the first, you recognize.
And I haven't read this resolution, but this seems to be a streets resolution, so I wanted to just question why we were sending it. Uh, traffic and traffic signals go to streets, not public safety.
Yeah, I don't think the Alderman from twenty-third would have a problem with that. He, because it's, it's for public safety vehicles. Uh, uh, it's for, like, the fire trucks can change the signal lights on the way through, um, uh, on their way to, you know, responding to any emergency. But, uh, but why don't we send it to streets? Uh, Mr. Alderman from the twenty-second, would you like to amend your motion to send it to streets?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to amend my motion to send Resolution thirty-three to streets.
All right, it's been moved by the, uh, Alderman from twenty-second and that second came so quick, I didn't hear it. Uh.
First.
All right, uh, second. Second about all of them, seconded by all the ones from the first, I, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The party's motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution uh, thirty-three to, uh, to streets. thirty-three to, to streets.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
All right, with dispensal line item twelve, Miss Lane has unfinished business.
We have.
Announcements.
Monday, May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Aldermen will be closed in honor of Memorial Day. Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, HUDs will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Ways and Means will have a meet at eleven AM via webinar. Wednesday, June first, Parks will have a meet at nine AM. Streets will have a meet at ten AM. Ways and Means will have a meet at six PM, I'll be a webinar. Thursday, June second, Ways and Means will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Friday, June third, full board meeting, ten AM in the chambers. Saturday, June fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ways and Means will have a meet at ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I like to encourage all my colleagues who have either resolutions or board bills assigned to HUDs to let me know. Right now, there's only one resolution to be heard, but I know there are several bills out there. And also, in honor of Memorial Day, I just pray that everybody have a peaceful day, say a lot of prayers for family members who have lost family members. The greatest sacrifice you can give is your life, especially to your country and your family. So I like to say that and encourage everybody to stay safe. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that came out to the Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association picnic last weekend, Alderman Schweitzer, Alderman Oldenburg, and former Alderwoman, now Representative Donna Behringer, were all present at the Lakewood, I'm sorry, Lakewood, at the Wilmore Lake. Because of all the rain and all the backup and whatnot, we had, not kidding, asked my colleagues two hundred hot dogs at this picnic. Oh, yes, so the South Patrol got plenty of hot dogs once we wrapped up. But I wanted to thank everyone for attending, for helping to make our community a bit bigger, and for coming to enjoy the wonderful Wilmore Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Alderman from nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to congratulate the San Luis Public School Board members for negotiating and realizing that teachers needed a significant raise, and their employees are very happy. I, I understand that they still have some other things to straighten out, but it was a long time coming. And it was, they took it to a level where it makes a difference. So it's not a two percent raise or a three percent raise, and then other costs absorb it. So it's a real increase, and now I'm looking forward and encouraging them and the unions and everyone to get together and give the retirees a cost of living. I don't believe they had one since I left the pension board, and that's probably fourteen years ago. So congratulations to them, and most especially, I'd like to give my honor and recognition for all those who had served our country. And, and those who are currently retired veterans must be recognized every day. And most, and I don't know about this country, other countries give all kinds of allowances for those individuals who have served. And so maybe one day, America will be like other countries and provide health care, education, and housing to those who are underserved. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the nineteenth. Alderman from first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I just wanted to remind people if they want to go by Irv Clay's, both visitation and funeral will be at The Rock. Visitation is at ten AM, eleven o'clock is the funeral. And so if people get a chance, they want to pay their respects, they can go by The Rock Church on North Grand. And secondly, the annual Bring It Together is coming back again. It's out at Forest Park. Ollie Stewart has been doing that for forty-some odd years. She's also turning ninety later this year. But she's still, it's a dynamic group of people, seniors. I often, I, I do a group of people, we wait on the seniors. Alderwoman Evans has been out there and other people, and we wait on the seniors, we serve them their meals. They have hundreds and hundreds, this time it's not, it's going to be at the Muni Upper Parking Lot, it's usually someplace else. And it was suspended for two years because of, you know, the pandemic, but it's going to start around ten o'clock. So I urge people, if you get a chance, stop by Forest Park, you'll be surprised, and it's the whole thing about bringing it together is to bring all different cultures. We got North St. Louis, South St. Louis, we got Asian culture, we got Hispanic culture, we got African. They do native dances, they do drum beats, we have all kind of things that's going on. And it really is a chance to just inter, interact with the seniors in our community. But also just to enjoy fellowship with them. It's a great time. I always say I'm going to leave early, and I'm usually one of the very last people to leave, to leave. And it just amazes me that if this lady, who is eighty-nine, soon to be ninety years old, can get this thing together every year, just think if we people who are a little younger than her, will put this kind of energy into one thing in our community. She is really amazing, and this event is amazing, and I would please ask you if you get a chance to stop by.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't, I don't know if the clerk had announced, we'll have a Parks Committee meeting on June the first. And so it sound like it's going to be a conflict, so I don't know.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you make note of that?
June the first, yes, I was announced at nine.
Okay, thank you. I thank you, Sharita.
No problem, you're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the fourth.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to piggyback off of some of the information that Alderwoman Tyus had mentioned about the bring it, bringing it to Forest Park. It's to honor and acknowledge the act of older adults. I belong to the group called Active Older Adults, even though I don't look it. But anyway, yes, and it's, it's a, I as long as I've been of age, I've attended it. And it's not only just for older adults, anyone can attend. And there will be a lot of vendors there, you can get a lot of information, and I just enjoy it. Plus, they feed you. And it's, it's, it's a nice event to attend. So if you have the time, please come out and mingle. And I'll see you there.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Appreciate that announcement. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, now that we're recognizing the older adults, I'd like to recognize those of us on the Board of Aldermen. We know who we are. Members of the older adults crew. You know, Ollie Stewart is, is a wonderful role model for us that could be her child. And, you know, let's face it, we have a, a legacy to live up to here. So those of you that, like I said, you know who you are, I know who I am. Celebrate your age and, and stay active because, you know, we're very fortunate to have our health and be in this the, the good state of mind that we are at, at any age. So recognize and pat yourself on the back for having good health and, and being able. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to invite everyone out this Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to the San Luis African Arts Festival. It's back in person for the first time since the pandemic at the West Fair Pavilion. You can go to sclafranartsfestival.com and get all the information.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderman from the twenty-eighth ward for necessary absence.
Move by, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All in from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn, especially since we had not one no vote on the motion to.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to next Friday, June third, twenty-twenty-two, ten AM in the chambers.
Move by Alderman from the tenth. It's seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 No.
We stand adjourned. You all have a good weekend and be safe.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.